Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Swanee County Board of County Commissioners meeting for June 6, 2023. This time, I'd like to get Commissioner Perkins to do the invocation, Commissioner Mobley to do the pledge, if you all stand. Thank you.
Thanks, Perkins. Please be very special to Father God. We thank you now, Father. How your truth has blessed us and you care for us, oh God, through many dangerous, seen unseen danger. And God, we thank you, God, for allowing us to be in this place at this time. We thank you, God, for allowing us the opportunity to serve this county, dear God, and these citizens of this county. We pray, God, you ever be with us, oh God, God, our path, charter, way, dear God. Look on these as here now, God, that you will bless everyone that's in this building, oh God. We pray that you look upon our departments, oh God. Look upon our local and our state, our federal government, dear God. We pray, dear God, we're in this perilous time now, God, that you continue to guide up your people, dear God. Ever keep us, dear God. Look on the bereaved families, dear God. You will bless them, oh God, in the mighty way, dear God. For those who have lost loved ones, God, we pray to rest upon them. And we thank you, God, for all that you've done and doing right now. In Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to this republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the bill of life, with liberty, justice, and for all.
This time, we'll move along to item number one, the May 16th, approval of amendments for the May 16th, 2023 regular board meeting. Is there any discussion, or can I get a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Hale, second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. It's, uh, I'm gonna skip over the consent to get to the time specific. Item number 11, at 5:35 or soon thereafter, as the matter can be heard, hold the second of two public hearings to consider the adoption of an ordinance regarding LDR 23-03, an application by the Board of County Commissioners to amend section 5.24 of the Land Development Regulations Regarding the Use of Subdivided Lots When Property Is Reduced in Size Due to a Government Taking. Mr. Meeks.
Do you swear or firm testimony about to give us the truth, the whole truth, not just the truth, so help you God?
I do.
And anyone wishing to speak on this matter? If you will, stand so we can swear you in at this time.
Do you swear or firm testimony about you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, not just the truth, so help you God?
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, board members, as I previously stated, the first go around when we had our first reading of the proposed ordinance for this, uh, proposed LDR amendment, um, section 5.24 of the Land Development Regulations deals with use of subdivided lots, specifically calling out, um, if a, the, the issuance of, of a building permit can't be issued on a, on a, unless the property is, is a full lot as platted. Um, and what it did not take into consideration is situations where, um, a deviation of a plat may be needed for right-of-way requirements or something like that. So, um, we're aware of some issues that have popped up along the, uh, construction of 180th Street, um, and we potentially have some that we would be dealing with on 169th with the expansion of utilities and right-of-way acquisition, and both sides of the roads contain, uh, platted lots in a subdivision. So we've, uh, created an amendment to the end of that text, um, where it says that building permits should not be issued on less than one lot as platted. We put an exception in there where, except where lots have been reduced in size solely because of a government taking. So that would not, uh, prevent anyone from getting a building permit that they would need to secure on their property or replacing or expanding their home, should they need to. Um, you have a proposed ordinance in your packet, uh, for adoption. Uh, this is the second of the two required public hearings. It did go before the Planning and Zoning Board for an advisory decision, and the motion was to recommend approval to the commission for adoption. I don't have anything to add at this time, and if you have any questions of me, I'll be happy to answer them. Um, if not, I would enter the file into the record at this time.
Admitted if you did at once.
Any questions of staff? Seeing none, I'll open the floor to public comment, sir. You're already sworn in. Just name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is David La Croix. I live on 180th Street. I'm one of the property owners affected by the taking for the rebuilding of the bridge. Uh, one of the ways it affects me that you may not be aware of is that if I want to sell my property right now, I'm legally and morally obligated to advise prospective buyers that if the house burns down, they can't rebuild it, which obviously would affect the price. So obviously, I'm in favor of you passing this, and I ask that you do that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll close this to public comment. Is there any further board discussion, or do I have a motion to adopt a resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve.
Motion, motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Mobley, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. At this time, I'll close the public hearing. Moving back to the consent agenda, we have, we're pulling items number seven and number eight for discussion. So we'll be approving our items two through six, nine, and 10. Is there any discussion on those items, or can I get a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve items two through, two through six and nine and 10 of the consent agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Land.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. Item number seven, approval of amendment to section 3.13 of the Personnel Rules and Regulate, Regulations to Include Swanee County Employee Return Restroom and Changing Room Use Policy and Adoption of an Enabling Resolution. Commissioner Land, did you, I think you pulled that?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I, I had just wanted to clarify, and I'd spoke to our county attorney just to basically shed a little bit of light on this. I got multiple phone calls over the weekend, the last couple of days, asking what we were doing. I don't know that they had the backup information, um, but we're concerned about exactly why and what we were doing, so I just asked to pull that just for our county attorney to, uh, maybe shed a little light on what's, what's going on here.
Sure. Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
So, at the end of the legislative session, uh, it was passed, and the governor of, uh, signed what is to become Florida Statute 553.865, which requires every political subdivision of the state of Florida that has a public building, which by definition includes the county, uh, to have in place a policy regarding employee use of restrooms, uh, for, and requiring that employees only use the restroom of their gender that they had presenting at birth. Stated differently, if someone was born a female, they're only permitted to use the female restroom. If they were born with male genitalia, they're only permitted to use the male restroom. This is non-discretionary, so where everybody, anybody comes down on the issue, quite frankly, isn't relevant because the statute says what the policy is, and we simply, as a political subdivision, must put forth and enacting policy, and this is what that does. Uh, so it sets forth pursuant to the statute, and it tracks the language, uh, requiring, again, employees of the appropriate gender to use their, uh, required bathroom. There are exceptions to that, for example, a medical emergency, if somebody is with a disabled person or an elderly person, a minor, uh, or if the restroom of the appropriate gender is not working. So those sorts of common sense things as recognized in the statute that authorizes, uh, people to use the, excuse me, alternative restroom. And it also puts in place a disciplinary policy, which is what we're required to have in place, which this would be a level one offense under our policy manual, which, depending on the severity, can increase in the appropriate punishment and the discretion of the county administrator. So it was, uh, it's an enactment pursuant to a requirement from the legislature, and as we are a wholly, as we are wholly a political subdivision of the state, there's no discretion. We have to have it in place. The reason it got put on the agenda for this particular, uh, meeting as compared to, why not do it some other time, is the statute explicitly states that the policy shall be in place no later than July 1, hence the urgency of getting this immediately on the agenda. So that's what the policy does. We're enacting a state statute, and it simply tracks the statute and does exactly what it requires of us. I hope that was a complete enough answer.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Mr. Morrison, Mr. Koch, you want to?
Now, I have a question. Does this also deal with unisex bathrooms?
The policy explicitly state, the policy is limited to for bathrooms assigned to a, for males or for females. The policy doesn't deal with unisex, uh, however, the statute does. Quite frankly, since I was writing it for a policy manual, you can start to get real complicated, which you don't want to do for, that would be a non-designated bathroom, so therefore, it's appropriate for a person of either gender to use. And if you go into, under the statute, it has what the definition of that is and when it would be appropriate. But for lack of a better phrase, so long as it's a single-use bathroom that can lock from the inside, which is what the family bas, you know, the family bathrooms or the unisex bathrooms are, anybody's free to use that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other questions?
No, sir.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Land.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye. Motion carries five, uh, all opposed, nay. Motion carries five oh. Item number eight, authorization to extend County Road 137 water line south of I-10 and award change order to Music Construction to complete work. Budget impact $108,675 to be funded from ARPA funds. Commissioner Land, I think you pulled, or, sorry, Mr. Mobley?
Chairman, oh, at this point, I need to recuse myself on this item, uh, as it involves a distant family member of mine, so I'd have to step out on this one.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else we need to do as far as that goes? Do you know, Adam? As far as any keys in the form?
Yeah. There's a formula to fill out, which just says why, but other than that, it's not a big deal.
Well, while we got this pulled, I've been involved with this, and this, what we're talking about is an extension of the water line at County Road 137. Right now, the water line goes to just past interstate and stops. Uh, at some point here, there was a, a little dispute between the previous attorney and the landowner, Mr. Markham, out there, and we couldn't get together on an easement. And so I stepped in, negotiated a deal where Mr. Markham would take a, a tap credit in lieu of money from the county for the easement. So we finally got the easement taken care of, and of course, this took so long that while Mr. Music was there, we couldn't finish the project, so now we gotta go back and finish the project. So hence is why we have a change order on here. I just wanted to be clear on this and open to the public of why this is happening, so nobody thinks anything funny's going on. The water line really does need to go to the end of Mr. Markham's property for, that's the piece of property that's there, whether he owns it or somebody else owns it, at some point in the future, is gonna need that water line there for us to, uh, to continue on with what we got there. So I did a little thing on the, or I had Mr. Scott pull this for me. Give me just a second. Originally, the project was awarded to Music Construction for 2.175, $2,175,215. North Florida Professional Services received 221,553 for the engineering. Dewberry Engineering also received 86,412.50 for an actual project cost of $2,483,180.50. Uh, well, there's one there for a difference.
The difference was about $135,000.
Yeah.
Remaining in that.
Sorry, I just didn't read it. So it's, with all the change orders, everything that happened in this whole thing, we're still left with an unspent contract value of 442,409, and you can see that what we're doing here is roughly a little over 100,000 to do it. So I just wanted to be clear on that and, and bring it forward, so everybody know what's going on. So is there any questions from?
No, sir.
So with that, is there any public comment on this at all? If not, I'll, can I get a motion to, get authorization to extend County Road 137 water line for 108,675?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Mr. Mobley recused. We have a three to one vote with Mr. Land descending. Uh, constitutional officer items, is there any constitutional officers, officers that wants to say anything? Staff items, Mr. Norris, or, go ahead, Eddie. Chief Hand?
Chairman Commissioners, just want to give you a little bit of update on our interfacility, uh, stuff that's going on, since, uh, it's been a, a few meetings since we discussed that before. Uh, the other agencies have been handling the majority of, of all of that. We've, um, you should have some paperwork in your packet tonight to sign that'll make everything done with all the COPCNs, so we're, we're pretty much out, you know, we're, we're still helping with emergencies once in a while, and, and still transitioning to, to them being able to have the staff to do 100%, but we're, we're way, way lower on our numbers than what we've been doing, so it's been going really well. It definitely has improved morale in the department, so, um, that's, that's a good point. The other item I wanted to bring up, one of our volunteer firemen, um, his, he, Kenny Dukes, his Sunday afternoon, um, unfortunately, went to check on his son, he's 19 years old, found him passed in his, in his bedroom. So I just wanted you guys to keep him in your thoughts and prayers, um, they're dealing with some pretty bad, you know, yeah, news, so. But other than that, everything's been going great, so thank you, guys.
Thank you for the report, Chief Hand. Before Mr. Norris gets started here, I, I want, want to congratulate him for being, uh, voted in as chairman of NFEDP. He was filling in a term for somebody else, and now they had to elect him, and he's been elected for a two-year term. Is that correct, Mr. Norris?
Yes, sir.
So, uh, a big hand for Mr. Norris. And I, I just, that, that's a pretty big deal for Swanee County, for Mr. Norris to be the chairman. If you go to these meetings, there's a lot of other counties involved and a lot of people that come to those meetings, and it's, it's just good to have him in that position. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I appreciate the support of you guys. Obviously, we wouldn't be as successful as we are without you, so thank you for that. Um, and while we're talking about it, uh, I will mention, you know, we did meet on Friday. Uh, the chairman and Commissioner Perkins were able to make it, and Mr. Mobley was fishing. I don't know what, what, he, I got a screenshot of a fish. I, I don't know what that was about, but, but anyway, it was a good meeting. It was over in Columbia County. Uh, we were able to talk about a lot of the issues, legislative updates and things like that, coming, uh, from, uh, Mr. Grissom. He also works for, uh, that organization as well. Uh, and we had a lot of updates on broadband and what not only Swanee Valley Electric is doing, but the other co-ops in the area. Uh, some of them have already lit some of their fiber, and we're getting real close. Hopefully, in the next couple of months, we'll be lighting some fiber here, uh, in Swanee County. So those projects are progressing along, uh, and it, it really means a lot to businesses to be able to look here and know that we're gonna be a gig community, so to speak, not just Swanee County, but the whole entire area. So, uh, we're real excited about that. Uh, we also talked about, obviously, um, the sites inventory program that, that we've worked on in this county, uh, with Victor Leota, who's been here and presented before. Rule County Days updates that all you guys attended, and, uh, you know, we thank you guys for being there, and we've set the date for that for next year. So, uh, for those of you that weren't there, January 24th and 25th next year, go ahead and get it on your calendar, please. So, uh, but good meeting, appreciate the attendance and participation, and we really, really appreciate what that group does. Miss, Miss Diane and, and Jeff, uh, really important to us, so. We also, uh, last week, Chris and I were down at the Destination Florida Marketing Summit, which basically is tourism for Swanee County. A lot of good stuff there, a lot of scary stuff. I don't know if you guys have ever heard of, like, ChatG, Chris? GPT? I always want to say GTP. Um, man, you can just talk to the computer and it just starts spitting out.
It's artificial intelligence.
Yeah, it's crazy, yeah. And then you can change it, and, and some of the stuff they showed us was like, uh, tell me about a bluebird, uh, if I'm five years old from the voice of someone in the Roman Empire, and this thing starts just, I mean, and it just goes on faster than you can read it. It just spits it out. I mean, it, it is scary. Uh, of course, I'm old school, you know, I like paper, I don't know about computers, but, but this stuff is, is, you, you couldn't whip it. The, the audience just kept coming up with topics and, and things, and it just kept answering questions faster than, uh, it's just, just amazing. But anyway, we talked about a lot of good stuff going on in tourism. The state of Florida's in good shape. I mean, uh, Visit Florida was funded again, that's important to us, uh, which immediately, by attending that meeting, we were qualified for a co-op through the state of Florida by being there at that meeting, uh, which will be huge to us, 'cause we'll save thousands of dollars on being able to co-op with them on marketing. So, uh, lots of good stuff there. I want to thank, obviously, Carissa for being there and the stuff that she does for tourism in Swanee County, and for you guys, and support us on that as well. A couple of other things, I don't know if you guys, I saw this put out, but my representative, Schof?
Yes.
Did you guys get a chance to put eyes on this? And it's kind of a summation of what the legislative term looked like from, from, coming from him, but I just thought it was interesting. I can never get enough of this, but, uh, he put in here that, you know, uh, as much as 10.6 million in state funding, uh, for Swanee County. Uh, in that funding is over 5 million for local infrastructure upgrades, 4 million for River Oak Technical College. In addition to these funds, the state committed another 13.6 million to various projects in Swanee County. And of course, it talks about 2 million for the water tower, 2 million for the sewer plant, 250,000 for the water transmission lines, 300,000 for the Branford spray field, 304,000 for live oak water main loop, 800,000 for the chief of new fire truck, 475,000 for Branford platform truck, 500,000 for the rail crossing out at the Cadillac site, and 4 million dollars to River Oak Technical College. So that's a pretty impressive piece of paper. Uh, I just thought it was interesting, this was put out by him, so hopefully, that means the governor is not gonna line Adam, veto any of those things, right? Because it's not been signed yet.
Right.
So, uh, also, I got a little story to tell. How long do I have, boss?
30 minutes.
We're, we're doing good.
All right. Um, as you know, uh, we're working on a lot of different things, a lot of different projects, right? So several months ago, uh, was brought to our attention through Miss Diane at NFEDP, that there was some money left in the rural infrastructure fund, leftover from the previous year. They, I guess, the money didn't get spent, so there was somewhere around 15 million dollars left in this account. She made a call to our office and asked if we had any projects that needed funding. Uh, we said, of course, we did. She said, I need to know within an hour. So we looked at the wastewater plant that we've been working on, which we know we've projected at 12 million dollars, and I just throw that to her, and when she mentioned 15 million, she said, how much do you need? I said, I don't know, can I get five? So she shot it over, she came back, uh, a little while later, and she said, we just found out these are federal dollars coming down, so only water or wastewater projects will work for this grant. So that eliminated a lot of other people. So it really narrowed the playing field down, as she suggested, maybe we up our ask. So we did. Um, we then, at the NFEDP meeting that was held here in town, uh, if you guys remember afterwards, we had a little brainstorming session with her, and we talked about some strategy. Um, Shannon, obviously, Carissa, Ron, uh, you guys, you know, how we, maybe we could go about this if we get the opportunity. Well, we got the call that submit an application, and I don't know why it worked this way, because typically, you would just submit an application, but they asked us first if we were interested. So we submitted this application, and when I say submitted, Shannon got 437 hours on it, I don't know how many it was exactly, but he, he, you know, just took it head-on, and he starts writing. Um, Miss Diane, she started working on it from her angle, kind of as a, coming from the governor's office previously and understanding what they're looking for. Carissa and I, Ron, at my office, we kind of started gathering data and trying to compile narrative. So I know I heard Shannon cussing over the computer when it was getting about 4:45, and we haven't submitted yet, and it's due by 5 o'clock on that Monday, I think it was?
I did.
Yes. I, we could feel it, we could feel it, right? But, but he was working, and Miss Diane was working, and Ron and Carissa were working, and we were there trying to, we were trying to get it as good as it could possibly be, and everybody was trying really, really hard. So we submitted, um, a couple of months ago, and then it went quiet. We didn't hear a word. And then they got rid of Enterprise Florida, and then the whole world turned upside down. And, um, we, uh, immediately, when we sent in the application, um, we sent a copy to our lobbyist, Mike, so we put him on it. We had him, we emailed the copy over, but we had Mike actually take a physical copy and walk over there with it as well. He contacted the governor's office, DEO, our legislators. I know several of you have reached out to our representative and our senator. I personally have done the same. I know at Rule County Days, when we were all there, we all brought it in front of them again, and when, uh, Senator Simon came down, had those conversations with him. Uh, but it's, it's really been quiet. So Jeff, Diane, that whole group at NFEDP, they have constantly been reaching out, but for some reason, it just, nothing, they were tight-lipped, we couldn't, nothing. So fast forward to last week, and we're down in Orlando, and I get a text from the, Mike, our lobbyist, and Mike, um, says FYI, and he sends me, um, this press release. So I'm trying to pay attention to the speaker, not to be rude, and I'm kind of, I'm going down, well, then, in bold print, it says that the governor has awarded 15 million dollars to five rural communities through the rural infrastructure fund. So I looked down in bold print, the first one, Jackson County, 3.3 million, McClinney, 1.1 million, Fort Meade, 969,000, Umatilla, 482,000. Well, there was no Swanee County in bold print anywhere on this. So I got a little upset. Mike and I were texting and talking about how crazy and messed up this was, and somebody said, wait a minute, read the paragraph above that. And of course, Carissa was telling me to shut up, because I was talking a lot and texting, and so the paragraph above it says Swanee County will be awarded 9.6 million dollars to construct a wastewater treatment plant and install collection lines to create 269 jobs. The Swanee County Award through the Rural Infrastructure Program is in construct, in conjunction with more than 1.9 million we got last year, uh, to go out towards water distribution lines through the Florida Job Growth Grant Fund, and 760,000 that we got through RIF for the lift station project out on 86. So if you go right back to the top of the press release, I guess the moral of the story is like your teacher taught you in school, read the whole document. Right here, in italics, the very first line said, awards include more than 9.6 million to Swanee County for infrastructure. But Jimmy skipped every bit of that, and we're right to the bold part down here. I immediately text the administrator, commissioners, uh, anybody I could think of. Uh, this is by far the biggest grant I've been involved in at all. But as I was sitting, sitting down there, I just got thinking about all the pieces and the parts, and again, like we've talked about before, if our relationships with those guys at NFEDP, if they haven't, if they hadn't have thought of Swanee County to say, because we had to tell them, we had an hour to tell them something, right? If they hadn't have thought of us initially, hey, do you have anything? If we hadn't have had those meetings, Shannon had to have worked all weekend, you know? If Ron, Carissa, they hadn't have done their part, if Miss Diane, Jeff, uh, Mike, our lobbyist, if he wasn't over there every day, that might not have happened. every day, that might not have happened. So it's a whole team effort. I am so, I, I literally was brought to tears that we got this because you know how long I've been begging for this wastewater plant out there? Before I got out of there, the newspaper called me. Lake City Reporter was calling. That's how quick they are. They were on top of it and literally wanted to know which one of y'all was kin to the governor. That was the question because somebody in Swanee County has got to be kin to the governor, right? But if you'll bear with me a second, I would, I want to, Shannon, please come up here and say something. You did all this hard work. Chris or Ron, please, guys. Mr. Chairman, when, uh, when they're done, I, I want to read y'all something, an email I got.
Yes, please.
If you don't mind.
Ooh, I don't even know where to begin. Uh, I'll, it started with a vision. I found out 2007, 2008 Wesley, when they were setting up the idea for the catalyst site. I guess at that time it was maybe bold. Folks weren't too sure about it. Um, companies came in. One of them went bankrupt. Everybody said, we told you so. Look at that. You know, what a waste of money. And then a couple of years after that, a new company comes in and then shortly after that, we're in the pandemic and people are pounding Jimmy about, can we buy a property out there? And new companies come in. And we're in this situation where we have so much demand, we just don't have what it takes to bring the businesses in. And that was the compelling thing. I don't know that it's, we all did our part. We all did our thing. But more than that, there were so many folks interested in bringing their business there that needed this, that we had to do something. And with so much money around in the economy right now, I thought the other day in the past two and a half years, there's been almost $7 trillion injected into the US economy. And a lot of that money has found its way to the state of Florida and of course, other places as well. It won't always be like that. And I thought, you know, we've got a small window of opportunity to pursue this crazy time where there's a lot of money. And, you know, with the help of everybody, as difficult as sometimes it can be, you know, we got it. We had several different ways and we had planned to go.
It was difficult, me or?
No, no one in particular was difficult. The situations were difficult. We had tried other ways to get the funding and we just, we got shut down. And so with enough ponies in the race, one of them finally won for us. So I'm just, I'm happy about it, you know? I'm so excited. And, you know, I, I told Greg, you know, I said, what's, what's the next thing? I, I mentioned that to, uh, the chairman and he had an idea right away on how to go get more money for something else. So I'm just excited.
Thank you. Appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you, Shannon.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd just say, um, ditto to kind of what he said. Um, not trying to date myself or age myself, but I mean, I've been involved in this whole deal since the, the day one. Um, before we had a catalyst site, it was an enterprise zone. So we just had a whole bunch of pine trees out there. Um, but, you know, just throughout all the years, creating a vision and, um, I mean, really, you know, a small rural county like Swanee County, I mean, you wonder if it's at all possible to get a 9.6 million dollar grant to get this. I mean, this is, I mean, uh, I know it's a lot of money, but I don't think that, you know, maybe a lot of people in the community don't realize what a game changer it is. I mean, that, that, that's the real deal. Um, and, you know, I live in this district, you know, it's Commissioner Hale's district. Um, I, I live not too far from there, right up the road and.
Yeah, it's fine.
Yeah. But, um, but you know, part of that is, is, um, you know, I understand how big this is and it's going to be a game changer for that interstate interchange. And that's not just for that interchange. It's for all of the county.
That's right.
It's going to be open up a lot of opportunities for that. Um, I was just happy to be a, a worker bee in the process. Whenever Jimmy said he needed something, I tried to get it to him as quickly as I could and that was never fast enough.
That's right.
So, um, you know, a, after that, you know, and then, you know, kudos to the commission, having the foresight and being able to acquire the property, um, you know, because now we're not looking for property to do this. You've secured that. Um, you know, we, we had a site already picked out with a strategic location that can service the needs of the interstate interchange. And having the support of the commission, having the support of the administrator, I mean, it's been, uh, just a perfect atmosphere to work.
Yep.
We appreciate everything.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
That's all she has to say?
That's it.
I just wanted to say that Mr. Norris told me if we didn't get funding for a wastewater treatment plant, that he and I were going to have to start looking for new jobs. So I'm relieved. I'm proud of everybody that was on the team involved in this process and just, um, so grateful that everybody was able to pull together and make it happen. So we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Team effort.
And with that, but I really want to read this email because everyone that just spoke and all the things that Jimmy has said is just falls in line. And I, should I mention who I sent the email to and the response? Does that matter, you reckon?
Yeah, no, you're, you're fine.
Oh, he, he had mentioned her earlier. It was Ms. Diane. I just sent a very simple email once, you know, we had all talked about this and I just told her, I thank her so much for all that she was doing for Swanee County. Uh, Swanee County is winning because of your hard work and your help. Very simple email. And her response was, and I want you guys to hear.
All right, speak up, Don.
All right. I'm going to lean into this thing. She says, these are very kind words, but I attribute Swanee County's success to the good Lord and the Swanee County team. The team was comprised of you and the other four commissioners, Jimmy Norris, Carissa, Greg Scott, Ronald Meeks and Shannon. Having worked with rural county since 1998, I would have to state, Swanee County has the most cohesive group of engaged commissioners I've ever seen or had the pleasure to work with. You guys support Jimmy and Carissa in all ways possible. You are great folks and I thoroughly enjoy working with you to try to achieve the goals of Swanee County. Best regards. So that just says a lot and it kind of backs up everything you've said and the folks that got up here tonight. So I'm just appreciative to be on this board and, and to work with you guys. And I mean, it's a win. That is a real win for us.
Big win.
It's a great team. Yeah. I can't thank you guys enough. And I'm sorry I failed to mention that, that Ron did about the property. Obviously the vision to go ahead and get the property in place so that we, when we applied for the grant, we could tell them we had a place to put it, right? And so that was, again, thinking ahead. But this, this is what we need out there. Now what I need is a master plan. If y'all know any engineers that could possibly get a master plan done and by next week. Shaking his head, yes, all right. Y'all, y'all got that right. But no, seriously, thank you for everything. I've been up here a while, so I'm going to run, but, uh, this is huge and I'm, I'm serious, very heartfelt. Uh, this is, this is what we needed, guys. Yeah. We, we, uh, with the 9.6 million, with the 2 million in appropriations, that's 11.6 million dollars. We needed, we needed 12 was our guestimate. So, uh, I think we're pretty close to, to being there to get this thing built out there. And, uh, if I can get Chris to get some more companies in here now, we'll be in good shape. So thank you, each and every one. Mr. Scott, Shannon, Ron, Carissa.
Thank you, Mr. Norris. And I, I just want to say, me and Mr. Norris had had several many discussions. We'd applied and not gotten, not gotten. And it, it had gotten so crucial on this sewer treatment plant that I'd already suggested that maybe, maybe the county just have to go borrow the money. We had to have it that bad. So it's fortunate the grant came through and now we don't have to spend your tax dollars. Well, I guess we are spending your tax dollars, just in a different way, but at least it ain't coming out of the coffer here. So real appreciative to everybody that had something to do with it, all of you staff, uh, other board members and, uh, just a great job all the way around. A real team effort. Thank y'all.
Very good.
Yep.
Very good.
Moving on, is there any more staff? Anybody else, staff items? Jason?
Also, Mr. Bailey is going to stay.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Just, uh, three things briefly. Uh, one, Little River Springs, just want to put that in front of you again. Continue to have tremendous success getting positive emails sent in, social media posts, deputies out there ecstatic about what's going on. I went to, I personally went to Little River this weekend. Families, kids, people I haven't seen out there before enjoying Little River. On the other hand, on the way home at Royal Springs, it was a little different atmosphere. So we need to, we need to work on that. But Little River Springs, I don't know if y'all are getting phone calls, but it's definitely working and, uh, great job with that. Second, Bay Bruce Baseball, we have a huge tournament, uh, district tournament starting Thursday through Sunday. Forty-four teams from 12 surrounding cities. Yeah. T-ball all the way up to 15. So five-year-olds all the way up to 15-year-olds. If you get a chance, one of those days, uh, afternoon, morning, stop by. May not be able to find a parking spot, but we'll, uh, we'll bring you in the golf cart and bring you down. So.
I was going to put in a plug with that.
Okay.
Uh, for you other guys that may not have small children, I would encourage you to drive out there and see the need for us to expand over this weekend. There will not be, I don't know where all these people are going to park. I have no idea.
Now that Jimmy's got his money, I'm, I'm hoping that me and Shannon and the rest of this great team can team up on some parks and rec funding. So I know you will.
But no, we own the property behind it. And I mean, it, it's kind of time to, it maybe put in a, through a road and just pasture it for parking for when 44 teams come. I mean, it's, it's going, I don't know where they're going to park.
Yeah.
But hey, we got them coming. They're going to spend money in Swanee County.
They will this weekend, that's for sure.
Sorry, go ahead.
No problem. Um, and then just lastly, our summer camp is, is here, our summer program. So swimming pool is up and running. Summer camp starts next week. Um, swimming lessons, just, you know, all over the place. I did want to just thank Paula and, and her team at the office, probably 20, 24, part-time teenage employees that she's had to phone call and text and deal with and get them in the office and get them hired. So that's a job and I appreciate her and Holland and, uh, anybody else over there that, that Mandy or Chad may have been helping with. So anyway, thank y'all.
Jason, free league.
Yes, sir.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Perkins. What, what's the cost for swimming lessons, please? The cost of swimming, swimming lesson?
Swimming lessons, $65.
Okay.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. Okay. Cause I got two girls, maybe.
I can get you a private session if you want for, for you. Oh, it's for the girls. Okay.
And while you're there, Jason, I just want to thank you.
Guarantee they can swim, right?
Yeah. Thank you on behalf of the District Five and the Town of Branford. Parks look really good. I went by Jenkins Park the other day. It's, it's really, really impressive. So, I mean, I just, just want to thank Parks Recs for what they do there. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Yeah. The guys are working hard down there. So I, I think it's looking good, looking better.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey.
Uh, since Jimmy brought up the master plan, we have started on that. Um, for two weeks, I've been trying to get a meeting with him, but, uh, I need you to revoke his passport so he stays in the county now.
I don't know. I had, I was able to catch up on the stuff at the office while he was gone.
Uh, yeah, seriously, we, we've already started collecting our data out there. Um, as you know, you know, there's many facets to that. So we got a, a pretty large team, uh, working on the, on the different parts. We got transportation. We got the water. We got sewer. Uh, we got stormwater in there. We've got, uh, you know, land use and all that. So, uh, our, our group is working on pulling all that data together. We're going to be setting some traffic counters here, uh, probably, uh, not this week, but next week out there, uh, to determine what our counts are out there. And they'll also classify how much trucks we got out there as opposed to, uh, passenger cars as well. So, uh, we are working on that. Um, I think I told you last time, we received a DEP water main extension permit for the water main, uh, project out there related to Project Wave. Uh, we've also gotten our comments from FGA because we are crossing, it is the county spur line, but because the railroad operates that and, and has oversight over that, we had to, uh, make it, make sure that we complied with all of FGA's requirements for crossing under, uh, that rail spur. So, uh, right now we're ready to, uh, uh, getting close to being able to provide the county a bid package to be able to put that out to bid. Uh, be working with, uh, Mr. Scott's office to expedite that as much as we can. Uh, in the past, the county's had, uh, very long procurement procedures. And if we can advance that, that would help out tremendously with, uh, with the client that's going to be served by that line out there as well. Um, the CV building, uh, we're, we're pretty much working on completion of that. Uh, we have, uh, coordinated with Ms. Allen. She's reviewing the kitchen plans, uh, for the extension use as far as how they'll be utilizing the kitchen there. So as soon as we get that, I think we can roll that one up as, as well. I think that's all I have as far as those general projects. Ryan's going to go over the transportation projects.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Good evening, Commissioners. Ryan Asmus. Um, so just to go over the transportation projects, your transportation projects that we're working on, an update on Wyman and Carter. So we've got our pre-construction meeting tomorrow. Uh, that one is going to be kicking back off and construction will start shortly after that. Um, on 80th and 139th, uh, we had a real good meeting with staff and the Water Management District today. We've got all of their, uh, requirements addressed and, uh, we should be getting the permit exemption very soon. So that project will be ready to move to FDOT for review and then for the authorization advertisement. So that one is very close. We're very close to getting that one, uh, out for bidding. And then on 76, uh, we are remodeling that project. Uh, we, we're still working with the constraints of the budget. Um, right now we're at 6.4 million and that's, uh, 300, 300 million over what the grant has. And so, uh, we've, we've made a couple of modifications as far as the lane width. We're all within the criteria, but originally what was planned was an 11-foot lane and what's out there now is a nine-foot lane. What we're, what we're proposing now is a 10-foot lane to stay within the budget. Uh, but we're working on those plans and they're probably around 60% complete. And then Express, we got some good news on that one. We have our permit in hand. So that's another one. I know the, uh, mayor is, is concerned about that one. That'll be one that will be moving forward very, very quickly as well. Um, and then the Greenway Trail, we have submitted everything to FDOT. So everything is in their hands right now. Uh, we're just waiting on their comments and as soon as we get those back, we'll address. And then they'll be ready for advertising as well. So.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Anybody?
I just got one real quick. On the 139th and the 80th, when you say getting close to go out for bid, what are you talking, 60 days, 45 days?
Uh, within, within 45 days. We, we have, we'll have, we have, we will have the permit in hand probably within the next week or so. And, uh, and that project will be ready to go.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Just some non-project, uh, direct project related information. Uh, one of the things I think that was really important that came out of legislative session, I thought Jimmy might have touched on, but rural infrastructure fund, they've eliminated the match on that. And they've also eliminated the requirement to actually have a, a client or a job creator to be able to apply for those funds. So you can apply for those funds without having a specific project in mind now. Uh, so I think that's huge, uh, uh, for the county and, and all that. Uh, the other thing is we had, we, we coordinated a meeting amongst five counties. Uh, the, the chairman attended. Uh, Shannon was there for Swanee County, but it related to Columbia, Swanee, Hamilton, Baker and Union as far as their utilities go. And the, the intent of the meeting was to basically talk about issues that, uh, the, the utilities are facing as far as it relates to permitting and order, uh, order usage in the area, uh, water management permits and things like that. But also an opportunity to, to cooperate as a group to hopefully, uh, or not hopefully, but in done in the right way, can save the county some money. Uh, for instance, you have now a plant at 136 and I-75. We've got plants at the catalyst site. Those plants are, are small to DEP. So they don't require a full-time operator all the time. But it's enough that you have to go out, contract for their services. Hamilton County has the same situation. Columbia has the same situation. And if the three could work together, you could go out for one contract and hire one operator to cover all those plants instead of each county doing their own thing. But the other, the other, uh, opportunities there are in there is if all the counties kind of standardized in say, uh, fire hydrants and water valves and things like that, you can then get larger purchasing power to, to save the county some money. Uh, the, the other opportunity there is something happens, somebody hits a fire hydrant and destroys it and you need to put a fire hydrant in, you don't have one. Well, you might could then contact Columbia County or Hamilton County. They might have one in stock and you can go put it in, be back in service and then replace their fire hydrant, you know, at a later date kind of thing. So, uh, we've got another meeting scheduled in July. They're working on, but, uh, I think, uh, there's a lot of opportunity there to be able to help the counties if they'll work together in, in that fashion. So.
While Mr. Bailey's on that, I, I almost forgot about it. I'd like to get consensus from the board to allow me and whoever from the county, uh, to continue along this, with these meetings and, and see where it all goes if, if we're interested in that. in that type of deal, like a regional utility, for lack of better words, I guess. So I just wanted a consensus from the board to continue on discussions.
Talking in meetings.
Yeah, there's nothing being approved, it's just discussions, so I can bring it back to you guys, and then we can go from there.
I have a question, and Mr. Gray, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. So like the facility we have that is up and running out towards White Springs out that way, does someone have to check on that daily?
Yes, sir.
I mean, is that a, that's what I was to understood.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that is a daily checklist that they have to go.
That operator has to go into that facility. There's a certain items he has to review and check on, and then he has to sign a logbook. The time, the date he's there, and how long he's been there, and what he observed, if there were any issues and things like that.
It's not, I mean, it's not time-consuming, the daily checkups are.
No, 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 no.
That's the thing that you're saying, if we combine, I mean, the same.
DEP requires them to be there an hour.
Right, so we have three, so doesn't really warrant hiring a full-time guy, we only really have three hours' worth of inspections to do, or two hours, or whatever it may be each day. So, but if we were to band together, hire one, or two, whatever, then.
And the same with maintenance as well, you know, repairs. You could hire one contractor that could cover all of that, and, and that'd reduce that cost as well.
Work together and reduce your costs.
Yes, all the counties are basically kind of in a similar position there.
And all seem as interested as well.
I'm good, I'm good, I'm good with that.
Mr. Chairman. Now, those people have to be certified in wastewater and in potable water, right?
Yes, sir. You, the wastewater plant has, whoever does that one has to be a cert, certified in wastewater, whoever does the water plant has to be certified in, in water. You do find operators that are certified in one or the other, but not both. You do have operators that are certified in both.
Yeah, I was, worked out of the poultry plant as maintenance manager out there, and we had those certified individuals that worked that system out there at, back there was Gold Kids Poultry, and now it's Pilgrim. And we had certified people to operate those things then, and it was, it's quite, it's quite a job to be able to keep those DF tanks checked and your clarifiers, and it's a lot of work, beds and all that, too.
It can be. Along those lines, if you know a young person that's looking for a field to get into, we don't have a whole lot of people in those fields.
Right.
They're becoming very hard to, to find people to fill them. The ones that we have now are getting a lot of experience under their belts, and they're getting to the point where they're ready to start, you know, enjoying retirement. So we don't have a whole lot of people coming back, but if you got, you know, a young person that can get past the wastewater side of things, water's, you know, nice and, you know, polite, but the wastewater side may not be as polite, but they're, they can make, you know, a good career out of that. There's a certification course that's held in, out of Gainesville. It's not a four-year degree kinda thing, but they can, they can make some good money at it.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Moving on to proclamations and presentations, item number 12 is local recognition. Mr. Land, will you take that one?
Yes, sir. I'd like to bring up Ms. Audrey Felkner and her family. Rest of you guys come on up, too. I'm sure y'all are support staff in one shape or another. I think her parents are Ryan and Sherry. Did I get that right? I'm not sure, the siblings.
Andrew and Abigail.
All right, all right. Well, congratulations to Ms. Audrey. It was brought to our attention, I think a lot of us got the email, but Ms. Audrey has been on the, if I say this wrong, you, you correct me, but you are on Team USA as a national champion in twirling, right?
Pretty amazing.
Congratulations.
That's amazing.
She was, that was on the team performance. She was also runner-up in the national competition individually, so not only is she part of the team, but she's obviously really good individually as herself. So congratulations on that. I think you've been twirling since your mom told me you were eight.
Yes, sir.
I would say she's dedicated. She is traveling to, I believe your mother told me Liverpool, England, on August the 9th and 10th to compete in the world championship, which is considered the Olympics of twirling, with your team and individually. And I believe your mother told me that August 9th happens to be your 18th birthday.
Wow, 18.
I just wanted to bring her up and recognize her. I do, there is a little bit of negative news to this. Me and Commissioner Hale would probably both agree. Unfortunately, she chose University of Florida to be a Gatorette.
Hey.
We'll still support you, but.
We'll still support you, you're a homegrown girl, but we were pulling for the knolls up here.
You did, you did exactly what you need to do, sure.
They're slow thinkers on that end.
That's right. What's interesting, what about Dad over here? Does he help you? Does he out there practice with you?
He does.
He does, I bet he would, that's right.
Best friends out there.
I'd like to speak to, I mean, I know this family, they're wonderful people. I'm proud of you.
Thank you.
I know your family is, and Swan County's proud of you.
Thank you.
For sure, absolutely.
If she'd like to come up and get a picture with us, we'll all get up and stand up here in front of the embleme. We have a little, Mr. Chairman's gonna sign it for you. He hasn't signed it yet, but he's going to now. Just a little certificate of recognition, recognizing your achievements. Again, congratulations, great job.
Awesome.
I know you'll represent us well.
You'll, you'll improve our image if you come take a picture.
That's right. That's right.
Come on, Dave. Hold her standing in the middle. Here you go. Hand in the middle there, Ryan. Mr. Chairman. Tighten up. Open your, open your teeth. Y'all show your teeth like she does.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great job, Ryan and Sherry. Great job.
Felkners, if y'all wanna leave, you will not, we will not feel disrespected. We could be here another 30 minutes, it could be another hour, you just never know, so if y'all have plans or dinner plans, by all means, we will not be disrespected if you leave. Lots of folks do.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just add, if I could.
No, y'all sit down.
They must be doing something right, but the, but the young man, the son opened door for Mandy whenever she was coming in today, so you just know they're, she's right, they're raised right, so thank you for that, too.
That's awesome.
Wonderful.
Yep, good job. Another guy.
Yeah, he signed it.
Mr. Jason Fury, would you come up for a minute?
I am not on the tour.
Did you bring an extra baton, sugar? He's gonna give a demonstration.
Of what? Not to do. There's practice at the, at the sports complex, I don't know if you guys do, but do that, yeah. Uh huh.
Well, they didn't give me no prepared statement to read on this, but Mr. Fury's been with the county for 30 years now, so we're bringing up him up to recognizing for 30 years of service, and it's a plaque that says 30 years of service presented to Jason Fury Parks and Recreation Department in recognition of and with great appreciation for your many years of dedicated service, devotion, and commitment to the citizens of Swan County. Swan County Board of County Commissioners, 2023.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
So, and I'm, I know you worked under Scott for many, Mr. Scott for many years, and, and
I think he did a fine job, and I really appreciate what you do. I don't think we could have anybody any better to, to take the job after he, he moved up to administrator, so real good, and we appreciate you. And Mr. Scott, do you wanna say anything?
Just, I just wanna say how proud I am, you know, you, as an employer and a boss and administrator and whatever, your biggest asset is your employees, and hopefully I nurtured Jason a little bit along the way, he learned what not to do properly, but, but what makes you so proud is how they grow and develop, and I see that across the board. Nothing to take away from Jason, but I see that other places, too, and, and that's the biggest reward you get in a leadership role, is watching the ones that you were under you at one time grow and mature and, and do great things for, for the community. But I'm proud of Jason and his family, appreciate it. Rhonda, sharing, sharing with us for 30 years. I'm sure there's days whenever she would want him to go to another meeting, or maybe wanna be home with the kids sometimes, so, but again, congratulations.
You can't retire anytime soon.
She's gonna retire before me.
But we'd love for you to come up and let us get a picture with you, if you don't mind.
Can we bring the young lady up?
Yes, yes.
Not as thick as you guys. Hey, no.
They're healthy once, yeah. Appreciate it, y'all.
Thank you, thank you. Good job, Gary.
Thank you, sir.
I will say, just real quick, while I have the microphone, 30 years ago when Mr. Scott hired me, actually came down to me and another young lady who I believe was the daughter of a commissioner, if I tell it right, I think, and he actually chose me over a commissioner's daughter, and so it was a brave move back then for him, so. I owe everything to Mr. Gray.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
Moving on to Commissioner items.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Land, I think you had something?
I do, yes, sir. This really is, is not directly related to county business, but I just wanted to shed some light on a story that, that I was made aware of, that I think indirectly should affect every one of us in this room, to the, to the, to the, to the point of the sacrifices some others make in this country, so that we can do what we do every day, and a lot of us, myself included, take, take for granted. I stopped by the Jimmy store and got this bottle of water, and I didn't know it, but it was on the front page of the Riverbend News, in I guess yesterday's paper, today's paper, tomorrow's paper, but anyway, nonetheless, it's in on the front page, but on the heels of Memorial Day, which, which is the day that we honor veterans that, you know, lost their lives or are no longer with us, and that number's many. I mean, many is not even a good enough adjective to describe the lives that have, have been sacrificed for this country. But in, I'm gonna read a little bit here. I just, I felt led that, that maybe we should take a little time to honor the sacrifice, maybe this particular one individual and, and his family. But after the Korean armistice, North Korea returned remains of more than 3,000 Americans in what was termed Operation Glory in 1954. At that same time, the US Graves registration teams recovered remains from South Korea. The US identified thousands of these remains. In 1956, 848 sets of remains that could not be identified were buried in the National Memorial Cemetery of the Pacific, known as the Punch Bowl Cemetery in Honolulu, Hawaii. Others were later buried there as unknown soldiers. Another unknown soldier was buried in the Tomb of the Unknowns at Arlington National Cemetery. July 1950, an 18-year-old boy was deemed killed in action and later missing in action. In, in 2016, those 848 sets were exhumed for DNA testing. One of those 18-year-old boys was later identified as Mr. Alton Christie from Hamilton County. Today, his body was returned to the family around 4:00 PM at Jacksonville International Airport with a full military escort. I'm gonna read his obituary, if you don't mind.
Sir, go right ahead.
US Army Corporal Alton Christie, Alton's flag draped casket will be, will be returned by motorcycle-led honor guard from Duval County Sheriff's Office to his hometown on June 6, 2023. Alton is being flown from Hawaii to Jacksonville on June 6, 2023, where Harry T. Reed Funeral Home will meet his plane and return him to his hometown. A graveside service with full military honors will be held at 10:00 AM on Saturday, June 10th at Evergreen Cemetery in Jasper, Florida. Your attendance is requested to honor this veteran for his ultimate sacrifice and, and in support of his family that have suffered all these years, not knowing his fate, but with a fate that, that he would one day be returned. Sadly, Alton's parents, LD Christie and Edith Christie, along with his three brothers, Bill Christie, Edward Christie, Howard Christie, would not live to see his return. With mixed emotions, his surviving, his surviving brother, Claude Christie of Pensacola, Florida, and sister Shirley Lindsay of Jasper, Florida, along with numerous nieces and nephews, will be standing closely by to witness his return and burial at Evergreen Cemetery. Here's a press release from Department of Defense. It says, "The Defense POW MIA Accounting Agency, DPAA, announced on June, or January 20th, 2023, that US Army Corporal Alton Christie, 18, of Jasper, Florida, killed during the Korean War, was accounted for July 8th, 20, July 28th, 2022. In, in July of 1950, Christie was a member of Company B, 1st Battalion, 21st Infantry Regiment, 24th Infantry Division. He was reported missing in action on July 5th after his unit had been, had been engaged by the Korean People's Army near Osan, South Korea. There is no indication his remains were recovered after the battle, and he was never recorded as a prisoner of war. The Army issued a presumptive finding of death on December 31st, 1953, and his remains were determined to be non-recoverable in January of 1956. In October of 1950, 20 sets of remains were recovered near Osan. Seven were entered, entered as unknowns. One set of remains designated X214 Tajon was thought to be Christie, but investigators at the Central Identification Unit in Kokura, Kokura in Japan didn't have enough identifying data to positively ID the remains. X214 was later transported with all the unidentified Korean War remains and buried as an unknown at the National Memorial Cemetery of the Pacific, also known as the Punch Bowl in Honolulu, Hawaii. In December of 2014, Christie's next of kin contacted the Army and requested the disentment of X214 as a potential association with Christie. The remains were disentered on March 7, 2016, and transferred to the DPA Laboratory at Joint Base Pearl Harbor, Hickam, Hawaii for analysis. To identify Christie's remains, scientists from DPAA used dental and anthropological analysis as well as circumstantial evidence. Additionally, scientists from the Armed Forces Medical Examiner System used DNA analysis. Christie's name is recorded on the courts of the missing at the Punch Bowl, along with the others who are still missing from the Korean War. A rosette will be placed next to his name to indicate he has been accounted for." I just, I just felt led that post-Memorial Day, that, that, a little short honorable speech to Mr. Christie and his family for the sacrifices that, that, that they made, not only him, but others, many others as well, like I said earlier, many is just a poor adjective. You talk about brave, 2018 in a jungle, carrying a gun, getting shot at. I don't know that we could fathom that. Nonetheless, there's a really good story about it, and I didn't get a chance to read the story in Riverbend News, I skimmed it really quickly, I was on the way here, but...
Well, I appreciate you bringing that forward.
Just, just, he's not a Swan County citizen, but he's a patriot, and he's an American, and he's a neighbor.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to share that.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That's good.
Moving on, is there any other Commissioner items, anybody else? Moving on to county attorney items, Mr. Morrison, anything?
Nothing in particular. We'll get to at our workshop meeting on the 20th. I've got a few things that I put on there.
Okay. Any additional agenda items? I have none, is there any? Public concerns and comments, anybody wishing to speak?
Wayne Hanica, 11883, 93rd Road, Live Oak. Only because I didn't hear it mentioned, but Senator Simon and Representative Sholoff will be here June 15th to ribbon-cut their office at the Chamber of Commerce, and after that, they're gonna do a post-legislative briefing in that. I have a short story, since you let me stand here once in a while.
I skimmed it really quickly. I was on the way here, but...
Well, I appreciate you bringing that forward.
Just, he's not a Swan County citizen, but he's a patriot and he's an American, and he's a neighbor.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to share that.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
That's good.
Moving on, is there any other commissioner items, anybody else? Moving on to county attorney items, Mr. Morrison, anything?
Nothing in particular. We'll get to it at our workshop meeting on the 20th. I've got a few things that I put on there.
Okay. Any additional agenda items? I have none. Is there any? Public concerns and comments? Anybody wishing to speak? Name and address for the record, please.
Wayne Hanaco, 11883 93rd Road, Live Oak. Only because I didn't hear it mentioned, but Senator Simon and Representative Sholoff will be here June 15 to ribbon-cut their office at the Chamber of Commerce. And after that, they're gonna do a post-legislative briefing. I have a short story since you let me stand here once in a while. And I've been quiet for a while. Sometimes we pay for things and we just go, yeah, okay, I'll never use that. And life goes on. And then all of a sudden, something hits you, and you go, wow, I don't really mind paying that fire assessment today. It was last Thursday, I had chest pains, and I thought for sure I was having a heart attack. Everyone from 911 to the paramedics that showed up were professional, cared about me as a person. I really want to mention Jordan Sanchez was the EMT and his team. But sometimes we pay for things and say, ah, we're never gonna use that. And unfortunately, sometimes we do. But I wanted to say that I'm happy and extremely proud of the fire department that's in this county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Wesley Wainwright, 1667229th Road, McAllen. I didn't get to hear all your story, but it inspired me to tell just one quick little thing. We got a local guy here in our community, and Franklin, you remember him well, Earl Mills. They had a special on Fox Nation, and some of y'all may already know about this, but this is an individual that he signed up for paratrooping in World War II because they paid another $18 a month, I think that's what it was, or something like that. Little unassuming individuals, he can be a chicken grower, by the way. But on D-Day, he was parachuted in behind enemy lines, fought all summer long through the European theater there, ended up being with the group that was surrounded at the Battle of Bastogne, which the Battle of the Bulge ended up liberating those individuals. Survived all of that. Recently, he was awarded France's equivalent of our Medal of Honor. Local guy George Burnham has been working really hard to get this guy recognized. Just a tremendous individual. And on a personal note, I asked him one time, I said, Mr. Earl, is there anything that you can think of that you learned back then that you carry with you every day to day? And he said, Wesley, I learned how to pray, and I haven't missed a day since.
Thank you for that, Wesley. Yes, ma'am, name and address for the record, please.
First of all, let me introduce myself. My name is Jean Evans. I live at 2526897th Drive. I've talked to several of you in this room. Mr. Meeks, Mr. Ron White, Mr. Crespo. I've talked to you numerous times. I've talked to a lot of people. Susan, or Suzie Hetrick, I've talked to her. This is all to do with the property down our street. And the property belongs to James Oly and Nikisha Strader. And their business is J&amp;O Custom Paint. And I have made, done some research. And my concern is he is running this custom paint and body shop, and it looks like a junkyard. I'm tired of looking at it. I have worked on this since Ronnie Richardson was my county commissioner. I have called and talked to code enforcement officer, which was Robin Crespo. Nothing has been done. And I'm a widow of a both sides of the military. My husband was a submariner for 20 years. His family was military, and my parents were military. Can I get something done? I don't know what he's doing with the oil and gas. We're all on wells over there. Do you want to be drinking oil and gas in your home? Any of you? The EPA won't do anything. I've called them. I've called Water Treatments, the water management people. That's who Suzie is.
What are you being told, ma'am? Just from the conversations you've had with different ones? I mean, what are they telling you?
Okay, here's the story. My grandson lives with me. He was driving a brand-new Camaro. He stopped by to ask the guy about parts. The guy come out, and he said, can I help you? And my grandson Eddie said, I want to know about this new car you've got back there. It's been wrecked. He says, oh, God, I thought you were at the EPA. Now, what are we supposed to think?
Yes, ma'am. I'm just kind of wanting, in reference to code enforcement, whoever you've talked to in a public setting that can do something about it, what have you been told?
I've been told nobody's gonna do anything about it. Now, recently, my neighbor Larry Comanack, one of our other neighbors, said that code enforcement has just been out there, but nobody's called me and told me what they're gonna do about it.
And how long ago was this?
How long ago was that?
About a month ago, five weeks ago.
A month ago?
But we've been doing this since December. And the code, when I called up, uh, Phil...
Name and address.
And they said, is he right now?
Sir, I'm sorry, but for the record, I need you to stand at the mic.
Let me show you this.
And give your name and address, please, if you don't mind.
Can I come to you?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want my shoulder, anything wrong?
No. As long as you ain't holding a gun at me, I'm all right.
I'm not gonna yell at you. I'm just upset that nobody up here's done anything.
First I've heard about.
And you're my commissioner.
Yeah. And he couldn't.
And you talked to me.
I'm trying to remember. I truly am.
Two years ago, I talked to you. I talked to Ron Meeks two years ago.
Can I hold on to this?
Yes, I have a copy.
All right, thank you.
I just want to know who's gonna do something.
Okay, get the mic. Get the mic, so they can hear you. Get the mic, so they can hear you.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lynn.
Can I make a recommendation?
Yep.
Maybe you and these fine folks here get together. It's obviously in your backyard. And maybe y'all get together with maybe Mr. Scott, maybe Mr. Meeks, and have a little post-mini meeting, try to iron this out or get somewhere.
That would be fine with me. I just want something done. I have one kidney. I can die from this.
I totally understand. I totally understand. And I think that the chairman's probably willing to meet with you in post-meeting. And y'all address it.
That would be fine. I just would like for somebody to take time to talk to us about it. It's, you know, it's our whole neighborhood.
I agree 100%.
And then the guy on the end has got mobile homes that he's renting out. Aren't you supposed to have five acres for a mobile home or a house in Niswani County?
Depending on what year it was zoned. I don't know.
Okay. I mean, it's trashing our neighborhood. I've been here since 2006.
Mr. Meeks, do you want to shed some light on this? Thank you, Ms. Evans.
You're welcome. Thank you for listening to me.
When we get done with the meeting, if you will, if you can stay after the meeting for just a few minutes?
Yes, I can.
We'll discuss it.
I would appreciate that very much.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm not aware of the situation of anybody renting out a mobile home, but I can tell you, just for the board, is that the complaint that she's referring to is an act of code violation. I've seen some of the photographs and everything. And of course, Mr. Crespo also has a body camera as well. So I have reviewed the footage from that encounter with the property owner. So it is an act of code violation. But unfortunately, the process of code enforcement is not as speedy as what we would like. And part of that is, you know, just due to opportunity after opportunity that statutes require us to afford an individual to bring a property in compliance. But the gentleman that owns the property is aware of the situation. He is aware that he's in violation. He's aware that he cannot continue in the fashion that he has operated on that property. And Mr. Crespo has been in contact with him. She's more than welcome to come to the office and meet with Mr. Crespo and have copies of any of the information that he has in his file, of course, his public record. But it is not a situation where we are not doing anything about it. It is an act of code violation. And if it does involve, including the law enforcement side of the EP for any type of motor fuels or oils that are found on the property, that's already been discussed. So it is an active investigation at this time.
Well, just for the public's sake here, an active investigation, I know a little bit, probably enough to be dangerous, but if you would, from the time he goes out and inspects and does what he does, can you kind of give us like a little outline of what has to happen next and how long that takes?
Certainly. I mean, you know, once he does his, I mean, we can't just be chasing rabbits, right? So when we go out to a property and we have to determine, sometimes there's no violation at all. You know, some neighbor gets mad at somebody else. It takes the time for staff to go out and do a thorough investigation and to determine that there's not a violation. But if a violation is found, then typically, we have a discussion with the owner on the property about a course of action to remediate that. And then the first process is that we send a first notice advising that individual of what is the violation that we've determined from the investigation, and then possible courses of action to remedy that. Of course, a timeframe will be discussed. And if certain improvements are made, we can extend that, those compliance timeframes, in order to give them time to get everything completed. I mean, sometimes you go to a property and it's a couple bags of trash. I've seen this situation on this property, and this is not an overnight solution. This is not something that has happened overnight. This has been ongoing on the property for many years. But by the time we get notified of something, sometimes somebody gets a comfort level of that they've just operated this way for a certain amount of time, and they don't see anything wrong with what they're doing. So once we get those notices sent out and they sign for those, if they find a point in time where somebody has just stopped and become stagnant and not pursuing their compliance, then we will have to notice them of a hearing. A lot of times, we have people who do not accept the notice that we send certified, so the statutes require that we post the property. So that has to go. We have to give them ample time for notice of a hearing where we show up at this facility here. And Logan is so kind to do our minutes for those code enforcement hearings. And we go before our magistrate, Mr. Schudy, and he will listen to the facts of the matter of what we found. The people are given an opportunity to defend their stance. And then Mr. Schudy will make a, you know, a decision and give them a time to come into compliance. And there may be fines and liens associated with that violation. We try to not get to that point. I mean, nobody wants to have a situation where they got fines and liens on their property. And we're not here to try to bully people and be an intimidation kind of office. So we do give them opportunities to come into compliance. And that's where Mr. Crespo is at now. I mean, I can't give you the date specifically that he was out there. It's been within the past month. So usually, we start with about a 30-day window in that compliance. That's why I said, you know, that she can come in and get the copies of the files from Mr. Crespo and to give a definitive date that he has put in there and any follow-ups. I don't, he's been in the field some this week, so there's been some follow-up inspections as well. So I don't know if that one of the properties he did frequently. But that's kind of where we're at. I mean, we don't just sit idle. But I can tell you that Mr. Crespo has active, in excess of 80 cases right now. He probably has another 100 waiting, and he is one man. So I've been in his shoes, also doing the zoning side of things. So I do know how your time gets spread then. And so it is one of the active cases, though I do know I can at least speak to that we have been to the property and put eyes on the situation.
And Ms. Evans, just so you understand, we haven't had Mr. Crespo very long.
I know.
Was he six months, maybe?
He just met his year.
Year?
Yeah.
Time flies. But before then, we didn't have, Ron was having to do zoning and try to do that as well. And we didn't, I'm not making excuses. We just didn't have anybody full-time like we do now to deal with these codes. So I just wanted to throw that out there. But it sounds like somebody's working on it, you know?
I went and talked to him personally in November before I had bag surgery.
Okay.
So he's a very nice man. We had a very nice talk about it. And he said that it would be after the first of the year before he got started on it. And so I didn't bother him.
Yes, ma'am.
And then I called him in February, and he said he was getting around to it. So, I mean, I haven't been driving him crazy.
Yes, ma'am.
And then Mr. Comanack, he's my neighbor. And so I said, will you call him this time and see what's going on and if he's getting to it? But we haven't been, you know, I know he's busy, but I think it's a danger to us that are on wells, especially me. And I just would really like things to be taken care of.
Well, it sounds like we are moving that way. It's just, like he said, it just takes time.
Okay.
And so, but you're more than welcome to go up and look at any of the documents and make sure.
Okay, I will do that this week, because I plan on being back on my own this week.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I do...
Mr. Morrison. Ma'am?
Sir.
I'm sorry, sir.
My name is Larry Comanack, it's 9768254 Terrace. We moved here about, probably four years ago. But we don't live here permanently. We have a house in North Georgia. And we, actually, we're gonna become, we're gonna come and live here full-time again. But I'll be honest with you, there is at least 50 cars. It's not a couple of bags of garbage. He's made a single wide into a double wide. And I'm afraid to have people come down our street. What's gonna happen is I'm gonna sell it, because I'm embarrassed to have people come down there. And I feel sorry for the people next door. You know what that's doing to their property?
I'm aware, sir. It's spread all over this county. It's not just that one spot. So it's why we hired a full-time code enforcement officer. And if I could talk Mr. Scott into it, we'd have two.
I know it's hard.
I just want you to know that every commissioner up here is concerned with the same thing. It doesn't, it does not go unnoticed. And there is, like he was, Mr. Meeks was telling you, he's got 80 active cases and 100 more waiting, so.
Yeah.
It is time. It does take time, but we are aware and we are working towards it.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just, I know we've spent a little bit of time on this, but I think I can give a little bit of context as well for the board, as well as regarding Mr. Crespo. In the limited time that I've been here as the county attorney, Mr. Crespo has been in my office multiple times, actively working. You know, if you had a caseload, and I'm being candid in my bias, I like Mr. Crespo. He works exceptionally hard. And it would be easy, in my opinion, with the caseload that he carries, to not be, for lack of a better phrase, muscular in trying to enforce our ordinances against some of the most egregious violations. And that's what's bringing him to my office, where he's gonna need my help in getting court orders when necessary, which we've gotten in other cases. So I don't, I'm not trying to excuse what has gone by so far, but I just want to say, please, don't hear anything about that as Mr. Crespo is falling down on the job. He's being very active in what he's doing. And then the last thing, just to give some context in the enforcement area, as Mr. Meeks pointed out, and I think as I stated when I gave that impromptu interview when I advertised for the job, I am the code enforcement magistrate for Jasper, Florida. And so I can just tell you, the goal, as Mr. Meeks pointed out with all of these, is remediation. Because when it gets to enforcement, quite candidly, I don't mean to say that the emperor has no clothes, but at the end of the day, the only thing you can do is enforce, is impose a fine to say, hey, do it. But because of Florida's homestead laws, you can't execute a lien on homestead. And so that's the reason why some of these things, why it seems like wheels are just spinning, but we're having to work within the reality of what enforcement actually looks like. So I'm not trying to be a downer, but I just want everybody to have an honest idea as to what enforcement is and how that works.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you saying that.
Yeah.
Any other public comments?
Moses Klepper, 1458102nd Pad, Live Oak. The, this, the consent number two, well, it's just an ongoing thing. It's been addressed at least a half a dozen times. The invoices, those of us that read the back papers, you know, the support papers and all, it's just blank. It's always blank. And I know the workshop y'all coming up on, one thing, I don't, I hadn't read it recently, but I mean, that $2,500, you know, non, what do you call it? When it's not on the, you know, it's not...
Recognizes real property?
Yeah.
Untangible?
$2,500, and it was wanting to go up to, you know, 5,000 or whatever. Just for us that review all this, it'd be helpful, because it's frustrating to go in here and try to keep up what's going on. And truly, I can't speak for everybody out here or everybody in the county, but I know my intentions are to be helpful. And an extra set of eyes, I don't know how that... And an extra set of eyes, I don't know how that hurts. And I'm not trying to create work for the office help. I could only imagine, I'm ignorant on this, but I would think everything that, it's itemized for y'all. I can't imagine with all the technology that it'd be adding any major work, maybe a click or two, to offer that. We, it's, and again, this is at least half a dozen times it's been requested. So, and then the other thing, I know we, we're shifting that in seat down there, and I'm not trying to put tremendous pressure, but back in March, the American Patriots made a proposal. And I know there was a switch in attorneys and all. Hadn't heard anything about the proposal. It was submitted from this podium on April 4th, I believe it was. And we hadn't heard anything. I just wanted to put a little heat on that. We're serious, we want something said or done. We want to hear there's a consideration. And if it's not, you know, approved, we want to know why. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none, move on to administrators' comments and information. Mr. Scott.
Just a couple of things briefly. Did meet with Mr. Locklear today, went out over to one of the landfills to get some information about, to get ready for our workshops.
You just got to get close.
Okay.
Better.
I play Don Hale. Anyway, went over to one of the local landfills to look at some opportunities for us. We'll be talking about that more at the workshop. Just want to review the workshop agenda so with you, that I've got right now. We've got a short window. I think a lot of the items that we're talking about will be relatively short. But let me just run through the list. I've got solid waste assessments, fire rescue assessments in service areas, regional utilities, we need to cover that. If not, we can bypass that. Space needs for the tax collector and property appraiser, the purchasing policies. Mr. Morrison has a couple of items. One is the procurement of property, the county projects that he'll be talking about. And also the PACE program, to talk about that and try to get some hands around that. Other is the EOC location. Any of those that you don't want to talk about, we certainly can drop those off. But the idea was to create a timeline to kind of keep us on task to move through the topics. Certainly, we can bypass that if we need to. But just kind of give an overview of things, get direction, and then find two things as we go. Is there any of those topics that you would not like to discuss?
That's fine.
Okay. Good deal. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that all you have, Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Adams, you got anything else you want to add?
Actually, I'm sorry. I would like to echo the comments that Mr. Norris brought up about the team effort it takes to get things done. I'm really proud of the team that we have. I'm proud of the ones that do the work every day. And it just shows the, you know, when we work together, we get a lot more done. And I'm really proud of that. So that's all I got.
Thank you, sir.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Perkins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Memorial Day celebration, I do thank for all of our veterans that have served for us, we want to say thank you to them. And just want to remind everybody that we're in now June, it's hurricane season to prepare ourselves for hurricane. And one also is that Mr. Herring, Jimmy Herring, one of our employees, his wife passed, and there'll be funeral out to her this Saturday at African Baptist Church at 2:00. She passed, yeah, breast cancer. So do pray for that family, for Mr. Herring, Jimmy Herring. I had a chance to go around in the community, the district, and stop by, meet some of the people and talk with them. And do have a card here coming from one of the concerned citizens that says that Maurice Perkins, I think some of you, everyone have gotten one, what a county commissioner, there's a lot of try and triumph. You folks are doing a wonderful and good work. We appreciate your dedication, perseverance, talents, hard work, long hours, and toleration and success. Pat yourself on the back and thank you for a job well done, concerned citizen. And that's basically what I have. Oh, and also is Jason had us out today at the Douglas Center. And pilgrim, we was thankful to pilgrim for their dedication to donation, for giving money to the equipment, the playground equipment at the Douglas Center. Really have made a difference in the community. The kids come out and adults out, come out and enjoy the facility and enjoying that. And a lot of work is going at the Douglas Center, really have changed the community, changed the atmosphere there. And just thank for that. Thank for the Jason for the hard work. And just, good job.
Have they insulated the Douglas Center yet?
No, yes, the thing that out for a bid on now, looking for pricing on that.
Just curious. At it, Maurice Perkins. Is that all you had?
Oh, and then also, Mr. Norris, it was great being at the meeting, NFEDP meeting, it was great, enjoy that. And to see him operate that meeting, did a great job and enjoyed it. Very informative, you meet people and talking and get a lot of information. So very, very good. And also be at the mix and mingle downtown at the restaurant Downtown Cafe was very good. Great food there. Y'all get a chance to stop in at the Downtown Cafe, good food, great people down there. So we thank you for that, too. So enjoy that. Good service, Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lawrie?
I'd just like to echo Commissioner Perkins on the card from the Iswani County citizen. Thank you for noticing what we do. We appreciate you.
I thought I was the only one that got that card.
No, it was us. We made you a copy of ours. And then we'd like to keep the Scott family in your prayers. The loss of Elliot Scott Jr., he passed away suddenly. And then the folks over there off of Iswani Valley Electric Road, they lost their place in a fire. So keep them in your prayers and appreciate everybody, the staff, and everybody for coming out.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrie. Commissioner Land?
I'll make it quick. I'd just congratulate Ms. Audrey again. Do us well over in Liverpool. We wish you the best of luck. Prayers for the Kristic family, the Duke family. Just continue to pray for those families that lost loved ones. Yes, Mr. Hanke beat me to it. The Shoef, Representative Shoef and Senator Simon will be here June 15th at 3:30 PM at the Iswani County Chamber of Commerce for ribbon cutting for their offices here. I'll put this up here if anybody would like to see it. And then echo what everyone else has said on the grant. I mean, I did some quick math down here, and that's, in this fiscal year, that's over $20 million coming to Iswani County. And it can't, I don't know what the record is, but I'd say that's probably the record. That's probably a record cumulative of maybe three to five years.
It's a really huge deal for Iswani County.
That's, that's, that's a lot of money. But it can't get done without everyone working together, pulling in the same direction. You know, sometimes we have short-term differences. You put those aside to achieve the long-term goal, and everybody's pulling together. Staff, Norris, Han, Shannon, I mean, Chad, Mandy, everybody, you know, Adam, Greg, you know, so I just, I appreciate it. I mean, there's going to be some really big things happening in Iswani County in the next 10 years. I mean, some of this money won't really go into effect and see the fruits of this for three to five years, but in the next 10, that interchange is going to look totally different. I promise. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Hill?
Yeah, just on the heels of that, I mean, obviously, we're not going to repeat what everybody said, but I think you see our feelings are mutual up here and in line with one another. And that's that responsible growth that I speak of. I think we've done it in a manner in which we don't want to outgrow ourselves. We'll grow in Iswani County, not trying to outgrow it. So I'm pleased with that. And again, just hats off to all the employees, including, you know, obviously, our office staff and all that. But I just, I never want to forget the guys out there that are running those graders, running those dump trucks, and the folks that really, you know, make us look good. And they do the job. I mean, they really do. I mean, the mowers, the tree cutting folks, I mean, I seen them up in a bucket one time a couple of weeks ago, and I'm thinking, there ain't no way you could get me up there. There ain't no way.
You wouldn't fit.
Yeah, probably wouldn't. But they don't make one's truck heavy enough for that, though. Anyway, I just thank everybody and thank our community. I think our attendance here has gotten larger and larger over the last couple of years. And that's just, you know, a testament to wanting to see Iswani County do well and being part of it and putting your input in and coming up to the podium and speaking like you guys do. And we appreciate that. And thank y'all.
Thanks, sir. I'll keep it short and sweet. I just want to say congratulations to the girls softball team in Brantford. I made it to the state deal, and I think we came up a little short, but hey, anytime you can make it there is a big success. So hats off to those girls. Also, want to just thank the staff and everybody, all the public, workspeople, anybody that works for the county. It's a team effort, you know? Together we succeed, divided we fail. So that's the way it's got to be. And I think it's showing now that we have a real cohesive team and everybody's pulling the same way, as Commissioner Land said. And it's just, it's a great thing to be involved in, and I'm grateful to be involved in it. I think that's all I had. Am I forgetting anything, y'all?
I have one question. Mr. Wainwright, how old is Mr. Mills? He's over 100 years old.
100, I think it was last year.
Is that what it was? Okay. I got you.
Two.
102. 102. That's pretty amazing. Yeah, he really is.
Let me say, I don't want, there's a lot of heroes across this land, but it's just a local guy. I just thought I picked, you know.
And it's, known as I, Commissioner Land, Travis, you know, spoke to that today.